What about the mics are on? Make sure your phones are silenced and we'll go ahead and we will open the meeting. On January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, it is seven oh one. We will start with a roll call.
Alexander Graham present.
Bob Bushard.
Bob Goss.
Jonathan Barnett.
David Gleason.
Okay, um. Dave, Dave Gaggen's a little under the weather, so he's not with us. Oh, good. All right, so, um. Oh, um, I do have an announcement. Um. This has been posted online. It's a save the date, long-term planning, community, open house. It's at the Kingston Collection, Monday, January twenty-seventh. Additional dates will follow. Four thirty P M to seven P M. Kingston Collections, Suite C one eighteen. So anybody who can make it in the public, on the board, please do. Um, we're real happy that we have people that want to, that seem ambitious and seem like they're anxious to get things done. And move forward and make something of that place. It seems like they have a lot of ideas and it seems like they have money. Um, the two things that the last guys didn't have, ideas or money. So this is a good thing for the town of Kingston. Now that they have the MBTA zoning, they can add that into their planning. And maybe we can get some tax money in, so our taxes don't keep going up.
Yeah, right.
All right, so first thing on the agenda. Uh, we have an appointment for a site plan review, and this is a revised plans, One Tremont Street. One sixty, well, it's, it's, yeah, it's right on the corner of, uh, One Tremont and one sixty-three Summer. S T S Properties, Scott Brown. We have a few small changes. That do not require us, uh, yeah, they require our attention, but they're not a big deal. Val, you want to speak to this?
Yes, this is.
Is there somebody online for this too?
There was going to be. Sorry, um.
Maybe their clocks off too.
It was gonna be Scott Brown, but I, I can tell you that. A couple, two years ago, we approved the site plan, but at the time, um, Mr. Brown was looking for, um. A waiver of open space and he had a different configuration of buildings. And we looked at this in two thousand twenty-two and then again in two thousand twenty-three. And we knew that he was getting this variance from the Z B A, so we said that once you work through that, you gotta come back. With your final site plan, so we can take a look at it and understand what's being approved. So what you have before you is the revised site plan, which tears down the house that's standing on the property. Leaves the apartment building in the back that's already there. And it's gonna be two, uh, six-unit apartments, um. Separate buildings that are separated further apart than what we saw. So there'd be enough room for everybody to drive around. Um, and they've got the architecture shown there, which is, um, which is nice and, um, it's.
Yeah.
It's gonna look, I think it's gonna look nice and, and have enough space. And we've done all the testing now, we've figured out that all the soils will perk. The, um, stormwater, which was a big concern at the time. So, uh, we also.
Add a site plant?
Yes.
In our packets?
You did get it mailed, but here's a large.
I mean, if you're okay with it, I'm fine, but I'm just. They're not in here. There are, there are people, uh, twelve people. They're into the waiting room? Huh? It says it's twelve people.
Oh, twelve people.
Sorry.
There wasn't anyone.
We have to hit you.
It's like, it's like Beth Israel in Plymouth.
All right. They all showed up.
There we go.
They weren't there when I started.
No, I know. They, they came in at the last minute.
Yeah. So. But, yeah, this is the, uh.
Uh, Scott on the, see.
I don't see him.
Okay, that's fine, we can keep going.
But it's in keeping with what we wanted to see. And it's got all the, um, utilities laid out and. They've done all the engineering work this time around and we know that it's all set to go. So I can.
Well, I'm satisfied.
Yeah, and we went ahead and reminded the building department that one of those units. Is gonna be affordable and I, I provided Scott with the local initiative. Application that needs to be filled out through the town to make sure we can count it towards our housing inventory. And, um.
Good.
Yeah, so they're, they're meeting all the requirements and it's good to go. It's been peer reviewed also and.
How many affordable?
One.
One. Okay.
I got one.
Should be two, shouldn't it?
Should be.
Yeah, the Z B A said one, but it should be two, so we'll clear that up. It's twelve, so it should be two. I'll make sure he knows that.
Sorry, Scott.
It should be two. Okay, um, I've looked at this too as well, I mean, minor changes.
Yeah.
Changes that are better. I don't see any problem with it.
And, and Pat Brennan, uh, reviewed it, he's our peer reviewing engineer and he didn't see any problems with it. He witnessed the soil perk test.
Foundation of the ground now.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's unfortunate, but.
They got permit, right?
They have a building permit, but they should have gone through us first, but I think for timing sake, this is where we ended up.
Yeah. Been inspected anything else.
So what do we need to do?
Um, vote for approval of the site plan as submitted.
So moved.
Okay, the motion is, is to approve the site plan as submitted. Um, we have a second.
Second.
We, uh, uh, move, we get an echo. Moved by Bob, seconded by John Barnett.
Like four times.
And, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post, extensions. All right. Okay. Back to our agenda. Uh, seven oh two appointment, uh, is, uh, Peter Hale, Associates Engineers Plymouth. A and R to create cemetery parcel of the Sisters of Divine Providence. Land at Potting Way Road and Bishop's Highway, it's map one oh six, lot one dash one and map one oh four dash one. This is, um. An A and R around the, uh, the cemetery. Who's here to speak to this?
Peter Hale from Associated Engineers. Uh, we were contacted September or October by. The attorney Howard Kalman for the Sisters of Divine Providence. And, uh, they wanted to separate. Their existing cemetery from a parcel of land that's approximately, uh, thirteen or fourteen acres. Um. They wanted to make sure that they would have at least enough space to put in fifteen additional plots, um. In the cemetery. Uh, so I've taken the plan, I've, I've taken the lot.
Can we do something with that?
I know.
The echo?
She's working on it.
Okay, thank you.
It, it's starting again.
So, uh, I have taken the lot and cut approximately an acre around the cemetery. Um, and provided access to the cemetery on an existing paved. Drive that goes through the property. Uh, leaving about twelve acres, I think, uh, um. Remaining out of the original parcel. So we have about a twelve or thirteen acre piece and the one acre, uh, cemetery lot.
Yep. Board members have questions? Val, you want to say anything about this?
No, they have a, as Peter said, an easement that allows access, it's small and it's carved out around the existing graves with a little bit of room. For expansion, but, um, access is off of Partingways Road. And, um, it's, it's pretty straightforward, it says right on the plan that it's an unbuildable parcel set aside.
Just a little cemetery that's down near the ball field?
Yes.
Yeah. Yep. Let me see if there's anybody. On that. Okay, um. Yeah, so this is a format, we would, um, need, um, a motion to endorse. The plan as presented. Okay, we need a second.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Uh, to endorse the plan as presented. For the cemetery. Any further discussion, any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, extensions. Four zero.
And an answer to pine, I'm trying to display the plan on the screen, but we're having technical difficulties again.
Well, I'm working.
We're working on it.
Okay.
Well said.
Thank you. That's that. Thanks, Peter.
Thanks, thank you.
And you all have in your packets, the, um, Ring Road. We're getting that reverb again. Um. Ring Road Solar at one twenty-six and one thirty-seven Ring Road. Uh, there's existing solar arrays that were constructed through permits on the cranberry bogs. And what came of that, um, in discussion, it's not finished yet, but there was some issues with. The wires being, um. A little bit lower than planned, a little bit lower than shown. And so. Just trying to fix the screen here.
Yeah, so I'll jump in, the issue with the wires where we told everything was gonna be ten feet off the bogs.
And the concern is somebody could be walking around and those are high-power lines.
High-power lines, if you flood the bogs and it freezes.
Yeah.
Could be two foot higher. It turns out that the supports are ten feet, but the wire sags in between the supports. And you can reach up and touch the wires and they're high voltage. So, not the best idea, especially with workers polishing bogs underneath. Lot of discussion between Lenny and, uh, Steve Ellis, the wiring inspectors, and also the wiring inspector in Plimpton. And, um, they would call and say, well, the Plumpton inspector's all set. And then they would call the other side and say, oh, the Kingston guys are all set, but nobody was all set. And so, um, wires that are within reach have, are gonna have.
They're gonna be wrapped, yeah.
They're gonna be wrapped, protection.
And then what, we, sorry.
Go ahead.
We, we walked the entire site with them, um, including with the town of Plimpton. And the electrical inspectors and, and looked at what we're dealing with and what we all felt that it was important that they fence off. That cranberry bog because. Way we see electrical code, it should be fenced off because of the access. So what you see on your plans there with the red lines is where they're gonna add fencing all the way around. Except for where there's deep water. Separating the outside from the inside, we didn't require fencing there, but anywhere else, there's a fence required, which meets code. So they're still going through their reviews and permitting with the building department, there's some other issues that need to be hammered out. But as far as the planning board is concerned, what we're looking at is, um. For the sake of our review, just that they've added these fencings. And we need to have you as an, as a, the site plan review board, um, be okay with the fencing.
It's something that we talked about in the beginning and we wanted.
Right.
Um, then, uh, their engineer said it wasn't necessary and then our engineer said it wasn't necessary. But lo and behold, I was never happy with it anyway. Uh, without the fencing and. Um, another thing that they had said, well, if you look down at copper, there's, there's, there's these bogs and they don't have fencing around them all, I looked down there and they have fenced it all, all over the place. So, and lo and behold, the, um, electrical code. Um. Calls for, um. Fencing, or protection, and protection.
Why couldn't those wires have been put in conduit?
What's that?
Those wires that were hanging, why couldn't they have been put in conduit?
They didn't think of it ahead of time and they didn't realize that they were that low until the electrical inspector. And how that happened was they didn't call for any inspections whatsoever during the construction. And that's a, a legal issue that we're trying to hammer out with them now.
I would think they're gonna be covered with something like you see when someone's painting along a house and they have that, that, that.
But that's a temporary thing, yeah.
I don't know, but it's something that the electrical inspectors are happy with. Um, the other issue we had was. They went through, um, and put all their underground piping in, they put all their footings in, they never called anybody for any inspections. Not the building inspector, not any of them. I think that's still being worked out, is it not, Val?
I'm sorry.
The inspections on the footings and the piping, still being worked out.
We're looking at a performance guarantee through town council because we don't know. What the foundations look like, we've never seen them, we haven't inspected any of the electrical. That was installed either because, uh, once again, they're, it's. Under state building code, they're required to have had a, a, uh, construction supervisor. Review and approve all the work that was being done out there and, including us. But neither of those things happened that we can tell, so we're trying to hammer that out, it's a real mess.
And, and it's a mess for them as well because they created their own mess because they have millions of dollars invested. And they can't use it, um, but, you know, I mean. One of the things that's being discussed is having an engineer look at it and stamp it and say that it's done the way.
That would be logical.
Right, but if you can find somebody that's willing to do that, unless they start digging them up and looking at them, I don't know what. I don't know what to say, and, but that's something they have to figure out.
Yeah, and buildings working with them and with council to try to sort out the best next step.
Is there anybody online for, for them?
There's a, I think there's five or six people there, but Pratik is the main person. Maybe he could speak to it.
Yeah, I'm here.
Nicholas?
No.
Which one am I talking to?
Pratik. Top, on the top of the screen, Pratik.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, so, yeah, what was the question?
We just were wondering if you wanted to comment at all on. The site plan, then the fencing, or anything else that we've been discussing?
Yeah, yes, um, yeah, as Valerie mentioned, um. First of all, I'm with, with Distributed Energy Infrastructure, uh, the, the company which is building this job and obviously the jobs. Substantially built already, um, again, we are here to, uh, discuss the, the fencing we discussed onsite with the. With all the different departments on where it should go and how it should go, um, so the plan was presented. And then again, intention is to get your approval, uh, and then get going on the construction of it once, uh. Once it's approved by all the different departments. And same on the building side, uh, I'm working with the building commissioner for, uh, for satisfying all the needs he has. In order to feel comfortable on the, on the footing point, uh, you all mentioned, so.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Do you have any questions for us?
Personally, no, I mean, again, we are here for that. Fence, uh, so that we can check that off, uh, in terms of all the different approvals we need. And then as, as, as Valerie said, as, said as well, that we have the bond in place. For, for the surety so that we build that according to the plans we have presented. As well as, uh, satisfy any additional documents the building commissioner needs on his end.
I'll see the engineer.
Yes.
Uh, you're the engineer, do, do you have any idea why no inspections were called on, called for during this whole project?
We do, I just, I mean, on the electrical side, we did, the building definitely, we missed that and then, uh, yeah, we, we just have to rectify it, it's not. Whatever the requests are, no, no excuses on the building side.
Pretty tragic. You guys, I mean, you have a, whoever has, has put a lot of money into this, it's like, it's really holding it up. Is there anybody else on the, Val, that wants, that you know that, here to speak on this?
Unless someone else volunteers, I think that's it. We have a question from Pine.
Can I go ahead?
Yes.
Go ahead, Pine.
Uh, hi, thank you very much, I'm, I'm sorry that I, I don't, I'm not oriented as to exactly which, which location this is. So I don't know if this is the, the, uh, the bog that included the battery storage along, um. Along the brook there.
Yes.
So, so, um, can you tell us, um, in terms of the battery storage? What kind of battery it is, whether it's the, uh, the lithium ion or the lithium ferrous phosphate?
I'll let the engineers respond.
Anybody have an answer for Pine?
Yes, it is lithium ion.
It is what?
Lithium ion.
So what are you doing in terms of fire protection? I think when we had first talked about this in the planning board. A year or two ago, we, we suggested, um, that it be, um. That, that the battery area be completely encased with, uh, concrete so that the water. If there's a fire breakout, could be contained and the fire suppressed rather than destroying the brook. Um, as a result of that. Um, what, what kind of, um. What kind of work has been done to achieve safety over there?
I'm not familiar with the, with that discussion, like we came in, obviously after the. Planning board was, planning board approval was met for the job, um, on our end, it's based on the fire suppression, uh. Mechanism we have in the containers itself, uh, there's nothing separate plan.
Can you speak to what that is? I don't, I don't, I have no idea what that is, I don't know if anybody.
I, I can submit for it, uh, I'm, I'm not technically, uh. Supposed in terms of like explaining to you exactly how, how the fire suppression works, but it does come with an approved, uh, system we have.
Excuse me, would you all be willing to have a tour for Pine so she can ask these questions at the site with someone who does know the answers?
Absolutely, we can.
Thanks very much, Val, we'd be happy to do that, thank you.
Terrific. We'll put you guys in touch after this meeting.
Great.
Okay. So, is this, are we voting on these changes or are we?
Yeah, you're voting on the, um, the fence.
The fence, okay. So, the motion would, would include, uh, adding fencing. Um, all the way around except where there's deep water, which is a reservoir in the back. Couple different reservoirs where the fence will go up to. You see the red lines on this plan?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Hi, this is Greg Sampson, I'm with Sullivan and Wester, counsel to the, the contractor. Um, so I just, just wanted to, there was one other question about whether the fence had six inches of clearance, I just wanted to confirm that it does. Um, so it is lifted six feet off the ground and then I just wanted to confirm that, yes, our request is that. Um, the board see the addition of the fencing as proposed on the plan as. Not a material modification to the project that doesn't require any further review from the site plan approval.
I think we've already determined that, right?
Yes.
This does not require more review?
This is the review.
This is it, so.
We just wanted to clarify that before we were requesting by the vote.
And obviously if something else comes up, we'll have to redress those things, uh, but right now, this looks like it's the only thing that. Is before us, the, the, the wiring inspectors have their own requests, they're outside of this vote, we're voting on the fence.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
You talk about deep water and no. Why can't the fence be a go across the top of the bank? I, I haven't seen it visually, but what if somebody came in a boat and.
Or on ice.
On ice and, and wanted to access it that way.
Uh, it's. It's not that likely, I mean, I guess you could argue that that's a possibility.
I didn't, I.
Yeah.
Not visually looking at it.
What we had was hunters and, and, uh, the electrical inspectors and everybody agreed that, you know, with the trails and everything, that. The way people would access the bog would be over the bog roads. It would be unusual because you're very close to the bog roads to then decide you're gonna cross over the ice, but I suppose they could.
Hmm, well, if it was frozen, they definitely could.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if I own this, I would want it there anyway, just for vandals.
Yeah.
Um, but.
So if, if you want the fence to go all the way around, um, we should say so.
So looking at the plan, where?
There's like three exceptions, um, wrapping around the, the bogs. Uh, where there's no fence and that is where there's deep water. But most, for most of, of the extent of the. Project, there's fencing.
So if you look at the first page on the plans that you gave us, that lower bog, the small one.
Yeah.
It's got no fence along that left-hand wall side.
Well, that's because it connects to the bog, um. Going in that direction, because this is also on the town line, so it's a little bit confusing. But you don't see a fence on that small bog on page one from the gate. To where the line is proposed, so. You could say I want to, you know, extend along the bog road. The fencing so that it's all the way around the entire, uh, sets of bogs. You can see on the second page, when you look at the top right, again, there's, it's a, it's a wetland that's. Um, it's, it's one of their ponds, then there's no fence along. Where they've got a gate at each of the entrances. Where normally people would come in on the bog roads. And then there's deep water, so they didn't propose a fence along that deep water edge.
I mean, I mean, I, I, I know, because I was a kid once, you grab that pole, you swing around it, you're inside. To Bob's point.
I personally don't know why.
Mr. Chairman, I.
What's your decision?
Hmm, could, could I just offer, please, um, you know, this was discussed with all the inspectors from both towns. And we were, you know, we walked, this was based upon an onsite, you know, walk where we determined. Where the access was, you know, required under the code and that was, I just want to make sure that's clear that this was. Based upon, I think we had five or six of the inspectors from both towns out there to evaluate.
I was there and it was a, kind of a general eyeball discussion, looking at the deep water, it wasn't based on code, it was based on protecting the wires from the public. Possibly getting harmed.
It, well, it was based upon their interpretation of where it was required.
Well, what, what's required is fencing. In the code.
Yeah, and unfortunately, um. For your argument, um, the inspectors don't vote on this, we do. How, how many people would like to see that fencing?
I, I have a question, on, on areas where it meets deep water.
Yeah.
Um, we have a dyke that goes all the way around those sections, if we put, do we have enough room between the high water and that? That dyke section to put a fence and still have access? If we put, do we have enough room between the high water and that, that dyke section to put a fence and still have access around there?
It's going to vary from.
Yeah, it's going to get narrow.
Yeah.
It's going to get real narrow.
Decision was that while, while we were out there discussing it with the electrical inspectors, the discussion was, is it likely that someone's going to come in this way?
Well, I wasn't there, so I'm gonna.
I think, I think it's, I think it's, no, I wasn't there either. Val was there representing us. But I, I, I see your point. I see it very clearly.
It might be a moot point, too. I don't know. I'm just asking the question.
I guess the question is liability here, too.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is, if there's ice there, it's just like walking with no fence.
Yeah.
How many kids, I don't know if there's access to that little pond or anything, but I know I used to bring the kids fishing and all those little bog lots.
Yeah, you can walk right out there. And there's, and there's car roads that come through the woods that end up there.
Somebody in a boat or in a raft or whatever. I'm not, I'm just.
Or skating?
Yeah.
Yeah, it sure, it sure seems like it should have fence that goes around there, if there's room.
Well, I would think there would be. I mean, if, if this thing is somewhat accurate, it kind of depicts the edge of the reservoir there.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
And they would be about the same spacing that you see around the top of the picture.
Yep.
It's pretty steep. Even if you're coming up off the water, you're going up a pretty steep bank to try to get in.
This one looks like it's completely similar.
Yep. There, I, I don't know if I gave you all of it, but I mean, the.
But that red line's a fence.
Oh, yeah. This one, yeah.
The only place I don't see it is here.
There's none here.
There's none on that top left.
I don't, I might not have given you all four sheets, which is my bag.
See this again?
But they're all the same in terms of the issue.
Ends there and the this is open. This is the bit deepest pond in the back.
It's not, the explanation was the red lines were fence. No.
Yeah, well, why is yours different than? Oh, there's no red line there. It ends there, it ends there.
What's this?
That's, that's a road and some black line. The red lines are outside, see?
Yeah, the black line there in that spot is a wetland.
Because this is all water here. This is all water.
Okay.
Yeah, well.
We have questions from Ian and from Pine. Ian represents them. Want to let Ian speak? He represents the cranberry.
Where is he?
It's up here.
Oh, sure.
Hey, oh.
Go ahead, Ian.
Thank you, and thanks, Val. Just, just as, as you're thinking about, just from agricultural, horticultural cranberry perspective, as you're thinking about the fencing, I, for one, was an advocate for not having the fencing around the reservoir because we do regular, not regular, but every 10, 15 years, we'll dredge those, the areas of the reservoir. And we routinely have to get to the pump house and put our suction boxes in and take them out. So I totally, I get, it's the same as when we were on site. Understanding the safety, public safety is paramount. Just as you're, as you're thinking it through, that, that was a consideration when we were talking on site. And just would ask for your consideration of that as well tonight.
So just, it's, we're having a hard time hearing you, so I'm just going to repeat it. That Ian is referencing some conversation because we all walked in different spots. We have the reverb, too, so it's very hard to hear in here. But the there were different conversations going at different points. So Ian is saying that he had a conversation with some of the representatives of the two towns about the deep water and that those are ponds that they use that they have to maintain every year. So they have to go in and they have to drop materials in and out, and they have to get in and dredge. So he's saying that it would be very difficult for them to continue farming the cranberries if we were to fence those in terms of practical.
Possibility of a gate?
A roller gate?
You'd need a really big gate to dredge. That's, you'd have.
One of the things about bog ponds, when they use the water, the things are just, they're just about dry.
Yeah.
Which is another problem.
Yep.
Which makes it worse because they pump all the water out of them.
With the wiring inspectors at this meeting?
Yes.
I mean, if everybody felt at the meeting that this, from a safety standpoint, this was okay?
Yeah, everybody, both electrical teams from the two towns. And we had Bill, excuse me, we had Paul Armstrong there from the building department, and that was the general agreement. But it was all kind of based on how could somebody get in? So the question of crossing over ice didn't come up in that conversation.
If they take care of all the safety issues that we're concerned about with the wiring, then I'm good.
What they are doing is they're wrapping everything that could be, you know, if you jumped up with your hand and reached up, you wouldn't be able to touch those wires.
What's it being wrapped with? What type of material do we know?
I don't know offhand. It's, it's a, it's an electrical.
Some of the electric, the electrical inspectors were satisfied with it. Yeah.
I think Pine wants to speak again.
What's that?
Want to acknowledge Pine? She's got her hand up.
Fine, you want to go ahead?
Uh, thanks very much. I, I don't want to, you know, inadvertently difficult here, but you know.
Oh, you're never, you're never difficult, Pine.
I know that. I know that, but I'm not sure everybody knows. I, I feel that because this whole project act type is very new to the town and because of the impact on the natural resources here, my, my concern is not just about people touching the wires, because I know that you will take care of that. My concern has to do with the, with the technology of lithium ion batteries and the difficulty of creating a safe environment in and not in a natural environment for that. And I would ask, especially because of the difficulty that we're having with the technology tonight, that, that we continue this so that, so that those of us that are trying to jump back in on this project to make sure that it's something that we really love in Kingston, that is, is, that works with the cranberry industry as well as alternative energy, that, that we, that we do the best job possible. And I'm not, you know, confident of that right now. And I don't, I don't have any images in front of me that I can refer to that, that, that makes me feel like, you know, yeah, this is the way we want the town to go. And I, I just ask, you know, that we get a better, a better sense of, of confidence in this project so that it can stand as a, as a demonstration project for future efforts in this regard.
Well, the problem, Pine, is that that battery issue that you're talking about is in Plimpton, not in Kingston. So we have no jurisdiction over that anyway.
So, so this is not the one that's on, on the brook?
This is.
That's part of what I mean by, I'm not, I'm not quite.
Ring Road.
I know it's on Ring Road, but there's more, there was more project on Ring Road. Of course, I don't remember.
Can you repeat that, Pine?
I said, I know that it's on Ring Road, but I, I thought that there were two projects on Ring Road.
These are right next to each other. I don't know of another one.
They're right across the street from each other.
Well, that's what I mean. I don't have a plan in front of me, so I.
Right.
Well, we'll have you meet them out there, and then you can further, you know, converse. But the fire department does review these plans when they go around. When we initially approved these, this is before I got here, but the fire department would have already signed off on
Yes.
the lithium ion batteries.
And the conservation department as well?
Yes.
So I would say if you want to meet them and, and express your concerns, that's wonderful. But what we're here tonight for is just the fence.
Well, and, and the public is here to see that, and we haven't seen it.
We had it up on the screen for a little while. Put it up again.
I, all I saw was a solar array. I didn't see anything else.
And it shows a red line where the fence would go.
There's no context to that. That's like, you know.
That's all there is, though.
But, no, it's in a context. It's in a natural environment. So, so you need to show the rest of the area that is affected by what is happening there.
Correct. So I would suggest that you meet with them and you can express your concerns. And then we can, we can vote on the fence tonight. Is that okay?
I have no idea. It doesn't, it doesn't make me feel like there will be any, you know, any, any serious acceptance of anything that I have to say there, but
Well.
It's up, it's up to you. I understand what the predicament is.
It's already been approved and constructed.
Yeah.
As approved.
I understand that. Thank you very much.
It's been approved, it's been constructed. I will, I will say if you have major concerns, they might be able to be addressed because as you know, you might have heard earlier, they never even call for inspections on any of this stuff, so we can discuss whatever we want as far as I'm concerned at this point. So, but tonight, we're just here for the fence, and then if we find out there's other issues, we'll, we'll bring them up to them. Okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Pine. All right, so what do we want to do with the fence? You want to do it according to what the inspectors all did when they went out there?
I think so.
All right, so the, the motion would be to accept this, the fencing on this plan as discussed. Anybody have that motion? You're, you're on it tonight. We have a second.
Second.
And seconded by Alex. Any further discussion? Here or none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? That would be aye. Abstain? Nobody abstaining? Three, one.
Thank you very much.
I was in favor of it. I voted against it. I guess. No, I, I, I wanted to, while we're like, if everybody else agrees with that, fine. I just wanted to just let my opinion be known without without it being denied. See what I'm saying?
Why could have done that?
But you didn't. Okay, the fence is approved as they, as presented. Okay, moving on. Val?
Except just scrolling through the plans from previous, this is the Tremont Street with the two buildings in the front and the architecture.
Oh, that's good.
For the viewers. And then this is the cemetery parcel. It's very small. At the sister's property. And then I was going to jump into the planners' report and try to be brief. I promise.
I don't think you're sharing your screen any longer. We're not seeing that on, on the Zoom.
It's showing on the screen for the town.
Oh, no, nobody else in the chat can see it either.
Okay. Pac TV's looking at it. I mean, the local scene is looking at it. Let's see if we need to do a share. Now, can you see it?
Yep, a little zoomed in, but yes, thank you.
Okay. There's the cemetery parcel from the sister's property. And that's the site plan for one Tremont. It's next to the Royal Garden. This is the existing building in the back, and then the two new buildings that are going in the front. The planners' report. So there's three things I want to talk about. And I'm going to show you a PowerPoint of the townwide traffic assessment that was done. This was presented to the selectmen last summer because we wanted them to determine what they wanted to vote on in terms of the projects. And so first, I want to just give everybody a quick snapshot of where we are with exit 20, which wasn't part of the townwide plan. This is the exit that's between Duxbury and Kingston, where it's going to turn into two roundabouts and clean up, you know, reduce all the accidents that we have there. So it's going to be the two small roundabouts. And construction is hoping to start in 2027. What, what's happened is there's been a couple of changes by Mass DOT in terms of their requirements. And at this point, we've asked the state if they can fund the additional engineering that's going to be needed above and beyond what was projected based on the number of years this thing has been in the tip. But we're still aiming for 2027 construction if that agreement gets worked out. So that's that. And then we worked with environmental partners, who's now Apex, and their omcall engineer that we use in our highway department. And what we gave them was all the information we have for the town, including the survey that the selectmen did, I think it was two years ago, where they asked for everybody's input on what's going on with the roads and sidewalks and so forth in town. So we asked them to do a full overview of existing conditions, proposed projects that they would recommend. The criteria, we hammered out, and I'm going to walk through those. And then they recommended some top priority projects which the selectmen accepted. And we broke it down into two separate sections, one being local roads and the other being state-owned roads, which we don't control or maintain. One of the things we talked about and we continue to bring to everyone's attention is that Kingston owns a lot of roads that are its own roads. It has almost 80 miles of roads that it maintains. But chapter 90 funds, which pay for the work that needs to be done unless we can get grants or some other capital investment in our roads, level funded for 10 years now, and costs have gone up exponentially. So our pavement conditions are not as good as we'd like them to be townwide for that reason. But this study isn't about our pavement condition, townwide. This study is about safety, both pedestrian and vehicular, including bikes. So the idea is to put us in a position to be able to apply for grants and to have looked at this in a comprehensive way. So what we did is we, we had them map out all the existing networks and gaps for vehicular connections, pedestrian connections, bicycle connections, all the safety concerns we know about. And that included all the information from the open space planning that's been being done by the open space committee and conservation folks. So we had a lot of information that was public input already as we looked at this in terms of the survey that the selectmen had done, all the studies that we've done over the years by Old Colony Planning Council, any traffic engineering studies that have been done. We gave them all of that information and we had them compile it. So the existing conditions that they mapped out, they showed us where the state-owned versus local roads are. Then they went. Then they went in and they showed existing bike trails and existing trails and trailheads. And this is important because we're trying to figure out what's the best way to rank these, you know? And then we looked at what places people might want to go to. So these are called points of interest. And I'll see if I can make this screen a little bit more condensed. I don't know if I can, but, um, these little black dots are points of interest where it'd be a store or a post office or a town hall or, um, some trailheads, that kind of thing. So we're trying to mark out where we're trying to get to as we do this plan. And this is a heat map of crashes, which we can see follow along the main roads where they intersect. And so that was important as well.
Say that again? That's what?
It's called a heat map. It shows the number of accidents and it gets darker when there's more accidents and lighter when there's fewer accidents. So it tells you where safety concerns for vehicles are.
Yep.
And then we had them, um, show, um, all the facilities that we have in town. And it's basically the same as what you had before. Where's the post office? Where's the library? Where are the schools? Um, all that kind of information. Um, and then this is, we asked them to also incorporate sea level rise. The sea level rise maps are a little bit odd. Um, you can see where my mouse is moving that there's almost a straight line where the sea level rise map cuts off. And that's literally where it cuts off because the studies haven't been done for inland. But we know that when the sea level rise comes up, which is gonna happen in the next ten to twenty years, we're gonna have, uh, trouble with flooding along the roads that are adjacent to this. So we wanted to make sure we included that too as a safety concern. And then, uh, they started to look at, okay, well, how do we rank projects? How are we gonna pick those? And they said, you know, we're gonna look at pedestrian projects, bicycle projects and, and car projects. And then we started to look at how do we rank these? So again, they went through all the previous roadway safety audits, uh, all the, the complete streets plan that we did in twenty twenty one. Um, ADA improvements plan that MassDOT came up with. We don't have them yet, but there's gonna be a whole lot of crosswalks put in on Main Street. Um, by MassDOT. And all the information we got from the public doing those, uh, two townwide surveys about, um, being able to move bicycles and pedestrians and cars. And, um, information we had from previous studies. And we decided on some prioritization criteria. And here it is in a nutshell. Um, we ranked safety first. We then took some of the key things about access to points of interest, network gaps, constructability, and project cost and ranked those all at fifteen percent because they're all very important. Um, and then we also said if it doesn't align with other plans and planned facilities, we gave that a ten percent. Uh, we gave extra points if it benefited both a bike, a car, and a pedestrian or any combination. And another five percent if it had to do with resilience to climate change. And then, uh, I'm gonna put this up on the planning website. So I'm just gonna kind of walk through this part a little bit quicker, but they scored the different things and came up with a total possible points for each one of those pieces of the pie chart. So for each of these, uh, sec- sections, there's a total of a hundred points altogether that you could score if you're a perfect project that meets every single criteria. And, um, they made a matrix, uh, matrices of all of these things in terms of distance from the school, distance to other points of interest, whether it's on a local road, uh, whether it's, uh, dead end, major, minor, all of those kinds of things were considered. And all of this was funded by the planning board's, um, public benefits account. These are the things that you guys have negotiated over the years. We paid for this whole study through the planning board's fund, so I want to make sure that you were familiar with it. So constructability means, is it feasible? You know, if it's really difficult, it gets a lower score because we want to be able to get grants and actually do it. So we gave higher scores to stuff that was low-hanging fruit and moderately difficult things of like a half, a five. Project cost, again, if it was cheap, it got a higher, higher ranking because we can probably get a grant for it and do it in the near future. But, um, as I showed you in the very beginning, we're still taking on the super complicated stuff like the exit ramps. We're not ignoring that. And then we looked at all the other, um, the open space and recreation plan, the complete streets plan, road safety audits and scored those. Um, and then we created some scoring for multiple travel modes and some scoring for resilience to climate change. And that's how they were able to start to rank the projects. So for the town on projects, you can kind of see these black dots. It's pretty hard to see on the screen, but these are all the projects ranked in order of their, um, benefits for safety. So a lot of them are right next to where the accidents are. And then they rank them all for points of access interest and they're very similar in terms of where they're located. If you look at this map and then this map, there's a lot of overlap. This map is, um, is it gonna link up with planned facilities? And the planned facilities includes proposed bike trails and proposed sidewalks. And then they ranked the top five. So the top five, the number one score was Main Street Route one oh six. And, um, they just mapped the corridor here and, and talk about that. Tackling that, which is a major, major cost, is still ranking high in terms of, um, projects for the town. So we put into the capital planning, uh, request for this coming year, um, roughly forty-nine thousand dollars to do the, um, community engagement and overall planning before we were to dive into doing any engineering. So we're hoping that that will get funded. Um, and then that might have to go in the tip, which takes a number of years to do because of the costs, but we can look at other options. The number two project was the crosswalk by the library and the bounce school. And you can see that there's, um, pretty high score there. And we've applied for the engineering dollars in the capital requests for twenty twenty six. Um, and we've also applied for the grant that would pay for the construction. So if we get the grant and we get the, um, capital, uh, money for the engineering, we can do that this year. And we're excited about that. And we talked today with our engineers about also including the sidewalks on the opposite side from the library, which are kind of narrow as a complete streets grant application and try to do the whole sidewalk at one time. And that would be a really big improvement for the town. The next one was, uh, we are at Pembroke Street, twenty-seven and Lake Street and Station Street, or in other words, the intersection next to the, uh, high school. And that's been kind of looked at for the possibility of a roundabout. And, um, we just made a school zone there to slow everybody down. Uh, because what's happening is, is people are not paying attention to the stop signs as they approach the intersection and going right through it and some cases crashing. So we've put a request in for the engineering dollars to engineer this and then we would use that money to seek grant funding to construct. The next one was Pembroke Street at Grove Street, which is the Witz intersection. And what's happening there is there's a very long crosswalk to get over to Witz. And, uh, the idea here would be to, to make these safer and narrow up the intersection just a little bit to make it a lo- a less long walk for a pedestrian. And that scored pretty well. So again, we have asked for the engineering in twenty twenty six capital and we've also applied for a grant um, as of, uh, last week to also construct this, this year. And then we had a, the idea of a Lake Street shared path from the high school down to Wingate is still on the table, but because the other projects ranked higher, we've pushed this one back in the capital plan. We'd rather have that intersection designed and constructed. And we've also been delayed in getting the funding for reconstructing the culvert that goes underneath Lake Street. So we want to time it so that any work we would do for a shared use path would come after the culvert reconstruction. And then there's some state-owned projects. Um, again, they ranked them the same way. They looked at, um, you know, now you're narrowed down to just the state-owned and state-controlled roads, which is fifty-three and Route three A. And again, we're looking at where there are access to points of interest. Where there's alignment with existing facilities and proposed facilities. And so these are, I'm not gonna get into them in too much detail, but the idea here is we will look at these and talk with Mastot and start to say, look, these are things we'd like to do and talk with you about. And so, um, there, the possibility of making this intersection a little bit safer at Main Street and Summer Street, uh, London Street.
That's a high, high accidents.
Yeah.
Not bad accidents, but bad a lot.
Yeah, so we would want, hope to work with them and get their buy-in to do some planning to improve that. Um, same thing happens at Main Street and Spring Street. Now, we're gonna be meeting with our engineers this week because we have, again, the planning board negotiated account um, of about thirteen thousand dollars through the L knife improvement. So we'll be sitting down with our engineers to see if we can engineer that intersection. And then we'll look for grant money or complete streets funds or other funding to try to make those improvements as well. Uh, Main Street at Howland's Lane, I think everyone agrees there's an issue there. It may not be signalized, but it might be a roundabout. So again, try to get the state's buy-in and, and doing something. And then Summer Street at Green Street, it's just vast. Now, we know that the state's gonna be doing a little something there with their crosswalks, so we'll want to see what they do. Um, but we also, again, we want to talk to Mastot and start to get their buy-in and show them how we've studied the town. And these are really high priority.
Where is it?
This is, uh, Summer Street at Green Street, so.
Oh, okay.
And then we have Main Street at Landing Road. And again, we have, uh, you know, similar problems with that intersection. It's hard to get out. Uh, so again, we'd be looking to talk to Mastot and say, what can we do, you know, to team up? And so those conversations are happening, uh, soon, you know, and, and, um, I just wanted to keep everybody in the loop. The other intersection that I'm looking at with planning board money that you've negotiated is we're putting the Tarklin and fifty-three and three A intersection, which is when you come off exit twenty and you're heading towards Big Y.
CBS.
CBS and Big Y. That's going into the tip. Right now, we're meeting, our engineers are meeting with the property owners that, that, um, we can fit a roundabout in there. It would affect the CBS parking a little bit. But everybody's open to talking about it. And it wouldn't, it would just move the parking around. It wouldn't lose any spaces. But it would make the whole intersection a lot safer. And we want to put that into the tip, which again takes several years. It's gonna cost millions of dollars to do this, but we want to keep things moving along. So we're, we push that into the tip as well. And, um, that's, that's the end of that presentation. I just wanted to, um, see if there's any questions. Let's stop sharing. But we're, you know, we're really trying to do some comprehensive planning. I did all of this work with, um, Paul Basler before he retired. And, uh, you know, we, we all put a lot of effort into this and we're excited that we're applying for grant money already. And, um, if we get the support, um, in the capital planning, we'll be able to do some of this work. Because as I pointed out, we don't have money for engineering in our chapter ninety budget. We can't keep up with our roads with the chapter ninety monies that we have. So that's that. And the other two are much shorter.
Good.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to, um, let you know that we did a draft update of our ADU bylaw for town council to look at. Um, hoping that if I hear back from town council next week, I'll be able to advertise this before the new state law goes into effect. And that would give our building commissioner, uh, the, the direction, which is to maintain the setbacks that we've agreed on in our updated bylaw. And to not have short-term rentals. Those are the two things that I'm proposing that we would regulate on these state ADUs. We'd still have our AD, local ADU bylaw doesn't go away. But we're only allowed to do a little bit with these new state ones.
Yeah.
So we put that up with council and we're waiting on the state to issue their draft regulations, which are actually gonna, they've issued the draft. But the final regulations I think are gonna be issued the day that the law goes into effect, which is very bad timing. So, um, if we're able to advertise though our proposed changes, whether these are the final changes or not, we advertise them. We've got something in place that actually has legal effect unless we don't adopt it at town meeting. So that's that. Um, on the housing production plan.
What happens if you don't adopt a media?
Well, if we don't adopt this, this change, that, then we're just, this, it's kind of a free-for-all. And you just go with the state regulations for the state ADUs and the state ADUs.
No, what happens if you don't adopt the state ADU?
You can't not adopt the state ADUs.
That was my question.
Okay. Yeah, sorry.
I mean, people are not adopting the MBTA.
Right. It's not a choice. It's, it's zoning. It's been already put into zoning. It's part of the, what they call the Dover amendments and it's like exempt, kind of like schools are exempt. Or, um, churches are exempt, that kind of thing. It's fallen into that category.
So the only thing that we want, basically, we want to say is setbacks.
Yeah. I mean, the other, the only other thing we can do, we're supposed to keep it in line with what we would do if somebody's putting a garage in their house. We can't be more, um, we can't put more oversight on that than we already have in place for somebody putting a garage on, which is a building permit. But we can say, maintain the setbacks. And that allows the tent, the existing buildings being converted. And it allows the older setbacks to stay in place for older houses, which is what we said in our updated zoning.
Good.
So that's that. State hasn't answered how that works yet. States doesn't have their regulations published. Those kinds of questions have been asked in the thousands up to the state and the public comment period closed a week ago. And in two weeks, we'll have a regulation the day that the law goes into effect. So the day that you could pull a building permit, the state's gonna issue regulations that say what it can look like. I bet they haven't either.
No.
What the building commissioners.
They're writing the MBTA and stuff now.
Yeah, the building commissioners think that this is all gonna be, um, uh, case by case appeals in the court, unfortunately, because this is so poorly written. But we gotta keep going with what the state's handing us, which, uh, we're trying to make lemonade out of lemons.
Well, I just think if somebody has
They can if they come to us for a special permit.
As long as we have.
Well, we don't necessarily have the ability to do that if they use the state law. We won't know until later.
But right now, we can.
Right now, anybody can do that with us through a special permit with the planning board. Right, it's the planning board.
Okay.
Okay. Um, housing production plan, we had applied for a grant, um, seven months ago now from the, um, EEA. And we don't know why they haven't issued any grants yet. And it's gonna cost us, I think it's forty-nine thousand, forty-seven thousand to do the housing production plan. We already had it lined up that we would contract with OCPC to do that work. It's a lot of work. Um, and it's due this year. So at this point, as a planner, I'm saying to the town, we really need to do the housing production plan. We don't have the grant yet. If we get the grant, fantastic, we'll use that money. But my ask is that the planning board allow me to use the public benefit accounts to pay, uh, OCPC to do this plan with us so that we get it done in time. If we don't have a housing production plan in place. If we don't have a housing production plan in place, even though we have we're at only five percent in terms of our housing inventory out of the ten percent that the state wants us to have. We'd want to have that plan in place because we might have enough units getting built in any given year. If, if production picks up again, if construction picks up again, we might get those affordable units and we want to have like safe harbor for a month or six months or a year, depending on what the state would give us. And that safe harbor is temporary halt on any 40Bs being filed with the town. But the only way to do that is to have our housing production plan in place. I think it's between forty and fifty thousand dollars. I don't have the number right on top of my head, but I'm hoping that the board would authorize me to go ahead with the contract and then hope that we get the grant, but we can't keep waiting for the agency to act. Yeah. So I've got three head nods. I'll take that as a, as a supportive vote. Yeah, okay. Okay, so I'll go ahead and do that. You all have a copy of the annual report in your, in your folders.
Yep, I would never do that to you.
I don't think we distributed the minutes, so we'll skip that. But the only other thing I wanted to touch on briefly is that in case folks didn't hear or did hear that the the town of Milton court case was determined in terms of that MBTA zoning. And basically, as briefly as I can possibly say it, the state said the law is good. It doesn't go away. But the guidelines are not good. They weren't adopted properly. And so those go away. So right now, there's this kind of deep breath of a few days where all the towns that didn't vote for it aren't in non compliance because of timelines. All the guidelines have the timelines in them, like you have to have it by such and such date. But the state housing agency, they're going to come up with emergency regulations, they thought by Friday. So anytime this week, I wouldn't be surprised to see emergency regulations come out that look a lot like the guidelines that they already had issued. So it's almost like a moot point.
They're going to issue an emergency guideline.
They're going, now they're going to issue an emergency regulation because the guidelines that they adopted weren't done administratively properly according to the court.
Okay, so they didn't do the job administratively, so get around that.
Emergency regulations.
Regulation.
And then they're going to have a ninety day public comment period. Yes. It's almost like it didn't happen.
They'll vote on it, they won't even read it. No one does anything.
So we are still, as far as we know, we're still in good standing. You know, we've submitted everything to the state for review before, before Christmas. The deadline was the end of the year. And we don't have to worry about it because we've done everything from Kingston's perspective. And we have gotten quite a few grants since like the morning after town meeting vote. They were holding stuff up, we think, based on votes. So that's all I have. It's a little longer than I planned. Sorry. But we haven't talked about the transportation planning effort that's been going on for the last two years. And I just wanted to take that time to. I also was wondering if we wanted to start taking all this work that we're doing and use this information as updates to the master plan. You know, we did all this transportation planning town wide. That could be the new section for the town master plan. If we wanted to start doing incrementally, because trying to take on the master plan for the whole town can cost upwards of five hundred thousand dollars with a consultant. And we're doing a whole lot of work for a lot less than that. And we could start doing, you know, this chapter. I know Marshfield was going to start doing it that way. Just update chapter by chapter by chapter. As we do the housing production plan, we could update the housing section. We could update the transportation section with all the work that we've done. And we could update all the demographics and all of that information. And so we do it on kind of a rolling format. So if you guys are cool with that, I'd like to start doing it that way rather than try to take on, bite the whole apple. No, there's no committee.
And that was disbanded after.
Yeah, once it was finished, I don't, there was no implementation committee. There was talk of having one. But when you read the plan, it's really a lot of lists of ideas and it doesn't really have priorities like, like what we did with this transportation planning is we said, these are our top five, but we ranked everything. These are our top five for the state to talk about and these are the top five for us. And we've already started to tackle those top five. So the idea of having like, you know, we could take what we've done and articulate that into goals and, you know, kind of the overall strategic steps that we're taking. And then have this as our, as our subset, this is the, this is our rankings, but we need to put goals and, and specific things on top of that that make it part of the master. But I think we could do that and be updating it on a rolling basis and it would be updated by the time. Yeah, I think, yeah, everyone I've talked to about the effort that was done in 2017, 2016. It was a massive effort. There was a whole lot of work to try to get public input. There was a whole lot of work done on that plan. It's almost six hundred pages long. And what, what's not there is the strategic comments, like these are the things about us that we want to do. And we can do that as, as a planning board and have, you know, open discussion with the public on those things. But taking all the work that we've done, including the 2017 master plan and articulating those strategic objectives is what's missing. Okay. Your planner is done talking.
Thank you, Val.
Thanks.
We want to hang around for another hour, so. Motion to adjourn. We need a second. All those in favor?
And then can you please sign the A and R plan on your way out? Just the Mylar. We need three.